Ms. Hodge, go ahead.
Thank you, Justice Green. May it please the Court, my name is Kay Hodge and with me is Jeffrey Bach, and we represent the plaintiff appellants, the school committees of Hudson, Marlborough, and Maynard, in this case involving procedures used in granting a charter to the Advanced Math and Science Academy that I will refer to here and after as AMSA. There are really two issues being presented to this court. The first is whether a school committee, or thus, school committees, may seek declaratory relief under Chapter 231A when a state agency has failed to comply with the requirements of a state statute, in this case, Chapter 71, Section 89.
Are you conceding, then, that a review under certiorari in 38 doesn't lie?
I do not concede that it does not lie, Your Honors, but I would rely on my brief because I believe that the standards essentially, it's, my, my reading of the case law is that the standards are essentially identical, but I think it's the clearest path, if you will, is under 231A. And we're, we're suggesting that generally, certiorari lies, as I understand it, when there's no other avenue for relief, and I think that there's an, that we have presented facts that this is a quasi judicial.
But to have certiorari, it's got to be judicial or quasi judicial in nature, and this clearly is not.
I think it's the taking of evidence, and, Your Honor, I'm gathering from you that you don't believe that the others may have applied. However, we'll rely on our brief with regard to that particular argument. With regard, we make a second argument, however, that the charter's, as granted, was illegal because it failed to establish a plan to handle special education students, and that the Department of Education or the Board of Education did not follow the prescribed procedures contained in Chapter 71, Section 89. Here, our focus of our argument is on the fact that these are statutory requirements established by the legislature. Mass. General law, Chapter 71, Section 89, created a new form of public education, and essentially what it did is it wanted to allow for the development of creative models which could be replicated in the public schools, but that it made as an essential requirement that all students be of, be allowed to attend charter schools. Section 89 was a product, driven in large part by the fact that there was, that there was a lot of conflict, if you will, about charter schools, and the reason for the conflict arose, as do many issues, out of money. And that is, is that the legislature determined that the funding for charter schools should come out of the funding that a school committee would receive, or city or town would receive, for their education budget. Section 89 contains clear requirements, therefore, in, in the compromise, that school committees be given the opportunity to review the application of any proposed charter school in their city or town, to comment and to provide public test, and to provide testimony at a public hearing.
They were offered the opportunity to do that, in fact, the comments led to additional submissions by the charter school applicant. I mean, that all seems quite natural and appropriate, doesn't it?
Your Honor, I believe that it seems natural and appropriate that you would have an application, and it is our position that the application has to mean something. You cannot file anything at the beginning and then change it. Here, the nature-
But the changes came in response to comments. Isn't that the process?
I believe, Your Honor, that the process is unusual in this instance, insofar as the statute specifically, and I would point out that, Your Honor, has given deference to the statutory language. It does not involve comments, and I would concede to, Your Honor, that we would be in a far weaker position had those, quote, "comments" been transmitted to the school committees for at least their response. I would point out that the application provided for a structure for the provision of special education services. That structure was to place students on one of two tracks. The lower track would be where special education services would be provided. That is structurally a violation of the law, and the reason it's structurally a violation of the law is because you could have a very high-performing student-
But can I ask you this, though? Is that, is that, is that now what is going on at the school, or has that been altered to meet what the Department of Education views as necessary?
I will point out to, Your Honor, that upon checking the website of the school just last week, what is on the website is the original application. No subsidiary information was included, hence, the structure of a two-tier approach. The structure of providing special education services only on the lower track continues to this day to be on their public website. What I can tell you, Your Honor, is this: I think that we also have to consider a secondary discriminatory impact, which is that when you say that to parents, parents are less likely to send their children because of the way in which the special education services are configured.
But we don't, we don't get to any of that if you don't have standing, do we?
I believe that we have standing, Your Honor, because under the standing cases, first of all, in Enoch's, which is the case cited by both the defendant appelés as well as the amicus, essentially point out, and Enoch states in its body, and I believe it is your case, Your Honor, that the fact is, is that a, that a city or town might stand in different shoes than, in that case, an individual who was challenging an environmental protection situation. But second of all, I would also point out that we clearly have, if you will, an interest here. One, the legislation or the statute provides our interest because the legislature saw fit to actually enumerate what our rights would be, but second of all, under Chapter 71, Section 1, the underlying obligation of a school committee is to ensure that all of the resident students receive an appropriate education, and consequently, that rests with the school committee at all times. But the final point that I would make with regard to standing is that we clearly have standing because the money essentially comes from the school committees, and if you look at the line of cases in this regard, you have to kind of have, using a sports term, you know, skin in the game, you have to have something that's important, and here it is money. It is also the underlying obligation to ensure that every student in our communities are educated appropriately.
But what, what significance, if any at all, does the fact, is there in the fact that this is a Commonwealth school? They also have something known as Horace Mann schools, and the legislation regarding the role of the school committees is, seems to me to be distinctly different in both schools. In other words, in this thing, you get the right to review and comment, and that's pretty much it. In the Horace Mann schools, you get power to approve, as I understand-
That's right.
-as well as the teachers' unions approve.
That's right. That's right.
That seems to me to be a very significant legislative distinction that goes to the issue of standing.
I don't believe that it does, Your Honor, because nevertheless, the money still comes from our appropriation. That's number one. So, setting aside everything, whether it's Commonwealth charter schools are funded by monies that would otherwise go to the public schools, and I suggest to, Your Honor, that that creates sufficient indicia of standing that we should be allowed to proceed in this particular matter. The second issue that I would raise, to Your Honors, though, independent of the issue of the money, is the fact that at the end of the day, although, although children attending the Horace Mann schools are directly under, if you will, the wing and auspices of the, of the school committee, the fact of the matter is, is the students, the students from that community can, if they desire, can move back to the school system, and the school system has to deal with the educational issues presented by that child. And quite frankly, Justice Greeney, I would suggest to you that a child has only one year in fifth grade, one year in sixth grade, and one year in seventh grade, and it is incumbent upon all, all entities involved in that, in the education of that child to ensure that the education is not discriminatory, that the education meets the needs of that child, and in this instance, we suggest that when an application, and I think it's important to keep in mind the following: this application didn't come out of whole cloth. Rather, there was a prospectus, and that prospectus was an initial sort of idea float, that where you provide a sense of the general idea for the educational plan. And in that prospectus, a number of the prospectus reviewers raised questions about the special education program. Nevertheless, AMSA continued with that plan in its final application. Then, speaking to what Justice Cordy suggested, well, shouldn't we take additional adjustments? Well, Your Honor, perhaps additional adjustments make some sense. However, if you're going to change the structure, and let us keep in mind, and in the papers we have cited to you, in our briefs we have cited to you, the different distinctions, the differences between the structure of having children on very rigid two tiers, with special education services only on the second level, or an individualized education plan which doesn't mention anything about special education services. And if the plan was going to be structurally changed, if the application, if you will, was structurally changed, I submit to you that the school committee, by virtue of its right to comment, should have been accorded the right to review this, and I would point out-
But why? I mean, they've already commented. The Board is the one who makes the final determination.
Exactly.
It's totally discretionary. The Board can apply whatever conditions. The Board is responsible to make sure that the education delivered is consistent with all these state standards. So why does now, if any, any alteration has to go back to the school committees for-
No. What I'm suggesting, Your Honor, in this instance, is that we needed to understand what exactly was being proposed, and that the application that is ultimately approved ought to bear a clear resemblance to, or ought to be, the application that was originally filed. Clearly, they were going to work out the curriculum for their math classes, and a lot of the papers would indicate that that's what happened. Here, the difference between providing special education only on the second track versus an individualized approach was something that the school committee should have had an opportunity to speak to. Now, and Justice Cordy-
I take it they did speak to it?
No, they didn't.
And they criticized the fact that it was a second track, and I take it that adjustments were made?
Well, but you know, Your Honor, it's unclear exactly where special education services would be provided. If you read the materials, it says, "We will do an individualized approach," but nowhere does it suggest that they would, they would suddenly be providing, if you will, special education services regardless of what track the student was on. But I would also point out that there's an underlying issue regarding curricular changes. And finally, Justice Cordy, the statute is very clear, that the school committee should be allowed to speak at a public hearing. That public hearing before the Board did not happen until February 28th.
I thought there were public hearings in January.
No, they were Department of Education public hearings, according to the statute. The Board must hold a public hearing. The public hearing was held on the same date-
But explain, explain, so the Department of Education held public hearings, the school committee, I take it, school committee representatives testified, and-
It's my, I'm not sure that they did, Your Honor, because if you look at the dates provided for the public hearings, they were earlier in January. I believe that the submissions from the school committees were provided at various times after that, and then the February hearings were held. I would also point-
Well, the submissions can be provided whenever, whenever the school committees want to provide them, but then there's also the form of a public hearing. They can also attend and testify, I assume.
Before the Department of Education, but I will point out to, Your Honor, that all of that testimony would have been, and those public hearings were held before January 30. Why do I suggest that January 30 is an important date? Because January 30 was the date on which this, quote, "interview" occurred, and I would suggest to, Your Honors, that the law cannot be, that someone can submit an application, fundamentally and structurally change what is being proposed, and nevertheless, if there is an obligation for notice and comment, leave the school committee, to believe that the application was as originally filed in November, to come and actually testify after alleged changes were made, and to then say, "Okay, we approve the charter," because the charter is approval of that original application. And, Justice Cordy, to the extent that the parties wanted to indicate an intention to comply with the special education statutes, I suggest that they should have read and should have responded to the comments to the prospectus, which raised similar issues before they-
Well, you may, you may suggest that, but the whole purpose of this process is to inform the Board and the Department so that they can make a decision, rational, attach rational conditions, a discretionary decision, and that's what happened. It strikes me.
And, Your Honor, what you really have is, I suggest to you, is that you must apply at least an arbitrary and capricious standard, as suggested by the Commonwealth and by the, by AMSA's attorneys, and in applying an arbitrary and capricious standard, what evidence do you have, other than whatever happened in this, quote, "interview," which I would term, quote, "secret"? What evidence do you have of the willingness of AMSA to, quote, unquote, "comply"? You don't have any-
What evidence do you have that they haven't?
Because I would suggest-
It's been operating for a couple of years now.
Yes, and I would suggest to, Your Honor, first of all, that if you are, if you want to know the answer to that question, I would suggest, number one, Chapter 231A gives us the right for declaratory judgment. You can remand this matter back for a hearing, and then we can present that evidence.
Ms. Hodge, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Willoughby?
Good morning. May it please the Court, Jane Willoughby, Assistant Attorney General representing the Board of Education and the Commissioner of Education. With me is Lawrence Green and Anatoly Darov, Ahur Council for AMSA. In the charter school statute, the legislature committed the policy decision of whether to grant applications for Commonwealth charter status to the informed discretion of the Board of Education. The issue in this case is whether judicial review of such a policy decision will lie.
But there were certain procedures in the statute, or certain requirements.
There are certain requirements in the statute that state the purposes of charter schools and the content of a charter school application.
And, and process?
The dates of when things need to be submitted, yes, but the decision is left to the Board of Education to exercise its informed discretion as to whether to approve a charter application.
No, I understand that, but, but, but the statute does provide that the school committees do have the right to review and comment on applications.
The school committees have two rights under the statute. One is to receive a copy of the application, which they did, and they have, the Board must solicit and review comments by the school committees.
But let's, let's say, for example, that the Board decided, you know, "That's a bother. We're not going to send them to the school committees, and we're not going to get comments from them. We're just going to make our discretionary decision, going to have a public hearing, anybody can come and watch, and we'll decide." I mean, no remedy?
Well, the, respectfully, the probability of that happening is nearly nil, but-
No, but I'm saying, you say there's no, you say there's no standing, no opportunity to challenge that.
If the Board were to go off the rails in that fashion, there would be a remedy for the legislature to go back and take a look at this and-
But the legislature already made a set requirements. What are they supposed to do now?
Yes, and then, and in this case, those requirements were all adhered to. And the second issue, beyond the question of whether judicial review will lie, deals with the validity of the process by which the Board awarded the charter.
It is, it is unusual for the legislature to set up a process where someone who feels they're aggrieved, and here, Ms. Hodge points out, the school committees do lose money, have no right of review, isn't it? I mean, usually, wouldn't they just say, "This decision would be final," and, and then we'd say, "Okay, there's no right of review unless it's judicial or quasi judicial."
Actually, the statute does say the Board shall make the final determination, and therefore, again, there is no right of review for the school committees under the theories that they-
And I suppose you would say, when we compare that to the Horace Mann schools, where the school committees are given express approval rights, right?
Yes, Your Honor, that-
There's a sharp distinction, there's a sharp distinction between the two.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You said earlier that the, that the Department was making a, quote, "policy decision." What's the nature of these hearings? Are they adjudicatory, or are they legislative hearings?
Well, the hearings took place in January. They are not adjudicatory hearings, Your Honor. They are hearings at which people who are not sworn provide comments on the, on the application, and there's no evidence presented, there is no testimony taken. In fact, the statute is actually quite precise when it talks about soliciting and reviewing comments. It doesn't say testimony, it says comments. So, the type of hearing is the kind of legislative hearing that is not an adjudicatory proceeding, and that's one reason why Chapter 38 does not apply here. The-
Can an aggrieved school appeal?
No, Your Honor. Again, the only time that anybody gets a hearing is before final approval of an application.
Ms. Willoughby, what's the logic in not allowing school committees, who will have their budgets reduced, not allowing them to have input in the process?
The school committees do have legislative, excuse me, legislatively mandated input, Your Honor. They are entitled to receive a copy of the application, which they did receive here. They are entitled to have their comments solicited and reviewed by the Board of Education, which also occurred here. That is the legislatively determined level of input for Commonwealth charter schools that the legislature saw fit to give the school committees.
Is there really any financial loss to the school committees? I mean, if, if they take away the per capita cost of educating a child who would go to this academy, that's kind of a wash, isn't it? Because the school committee then doesn't have to spend that on that child.
My understanding is that, Your Honor, is, is correct, that the money is, the idea is that the money is to follow the child, that the money is precisely the same, and that there's no loss at all to the school committees, I think overstates the matter. But the idea is for the money to follow the child.
So there really is no loss?
I, I don't think that's correct. I do think that there is some loss, since it's not precisely equivalent, but the legislature recently amended the statute to try to ameliorate any loss to the school committees resulting from children attending charter schools.
When did they do that? Is that in your brief?
It's, the statute is in the addendum, and I believe it was in 2000 and-
Whenever, but you've got it there.
Yes, it is there, Your Honor.
So I take it, if enough students leave a particular school district, that it could result in a loss of money that means maybe the loss of an honors program or an honors course, because they couldn't hire a particular teacher?
I would hesitate to quantify it, Your Honor. There is, as I said, it's not perfectly awash, but nonetheless, the legislature has made the determination as to what level of participation given that should be given to the school committees and set it out in the statute. Consequently, given that there is no adjudicatory proceeding and that the proceedings, as Justice Greeney observed, are neither judicial nor quasi judicial in nature, there's no right to certiorari review. With respect to the declaratory judgment statute, the overall thrust of the amended complaint in this matter is one of process or procedure, and therefore, that is in effect a claim relating to an agency practice or procedure, but there's no evidence that such a procedure or practice has been consistently repeated. Consequently, there's no proper statement for declaratory relief under the amended complaint as filed in this matter.
Do we have to get involved in trying to parse that second sentence? Why can't we just, assuming it checks out, say that they're not within the zone of interest? That the statute contemplates, when the statute gives complete discretion, creates only rights of notice and, and comment, complete discretion to make, as you point out, a, quote, "final determination"? Where is any duty breach that would bring them within the scope, the zone of interest under cases such as Enoch's and other cases?
We don't dispute that, Your Honor. The standing argument is made in more detail by my brother, Mr. Green, and he's prepared to address that in the five minutes that he has, which follows my 10. The only other thing I would say, Your Honor, if, if Your Honor reaches the issue of judicial review and determines that judicial review is available, the head in front of the latest complaint is simply that the executive director of the charter school submitted a letter after the interview that took place on January 30th clarifying the application, and the school committees claimed that they were entitled to receive a copy of that. However, the statute does not give them that right, and the school committees, interestingly, have never attempted to show how their comments would have been different had they had a copy of that letter. Under the statute, they were only entitled to a, a copy of the application, and what they're seeking really is a kind of party status that the charter school statute does not give them. The public hearing is not an adversary proceeding, and as Justice Cordy pointed out, they were permitted to comment on the application, and there is nothing that is required to give them a kind of party status by which they can receive every piece of paper that gets filed subsequent to the filing of the application.
But when, when the Board makes its decision, it can make a, it can approve with conditions. Is the decision a, a one-liner, approved, or is it approved subject to, or is that available?
The, the form of the approval is contained in the administrative record, Your Honor, in the Board vote from February 24th, and in this particular case, the school was given a planning year to prepare to open its doors. The final thing that I'll say on the special education is that the regulations require only that the applicant demonstrate the ability to comply with the special education laws, not that it have a perfect plan ready to go right when the doors open. AMSA submitted its application, questions were raised by the department's reviewers and others, and those questions were addressed to the satisfaction of the department and the Board when it approved the application in February. Finally, I would just note, there are a variety of things, hoops, that the school has to jump through before it opened, relating specifically to special education, involving training and technical assistance, and ongoing review by the department. Consequently, the state defendants respectfully request that the Court affirm the decision of the Superior Court denying judicial review, and if the Court reaches the substance of the Board's decision, that the Court approve and affirm the Board's decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Your Honor. May it please the Court. Lawrence Green, joined by Anatoly Darov, representing AMSA. Your Honors, the Superior Court properly granted judgment on the pleadings here. To respond to a question asked by Justice Cordy, for the past year and a half, my client has been operating and operating successfully, and in particular, they have been fulfilling their many responsibilities in the special education area. This is outside of the record, Your Honor, but I do want to make sure that there is no mistake on this, but because there was a suggestion that there is some discriminatory tracking taking place. That is not the case. All Ms. Hodge cited to was the fact that the application is on the website, as it should be. In fact, there is no discriminatory tracking. In fact, the special education students are permitted to be a part of both tracks. In fact, there are 25 special education students in the present school who are on individualized education plans. In fact, there are 15 additional students under Section 504 programs. AMSA has two full-time special education teachers, one part-time special education teacher, one full-time and one part-time teaching assistant, and one special education breakout workroom. I don't mean to belabor facts that are outside of the record, but I do want to respond to, I mention this-
We should sort of, we should sort of stay away from those.
I, I, I mention it in this context, Your Honor. The recourse that the school boards have here is there. It is to file a complaint after the fact. The statute and the regulations are very clear that they have every right to file a complaint, first with the trustees, and then, if it is not properly met by the trustees of the academy, with the Board. The Board has the right, under the statute, to pull the entire charter at any point in time. So there should be no suggestion here that the school boards somehow have no further rights here, that somehow all is lost because they never were able to see the letter that was submitted, submitted on behalf of the academy. They are no doubt monitoring what is going on, and in fact, they have filed an application dealing with something else altogether. They say, "We're attracting students, too many students outside of the towns here." That application, by the way, was denied. They know how to file an application. The statute gives them the right to file the application. They haven't done so. We have no doubt that the school committees will continue to look very closely at what AMSA is doing here, and we will have no doubt that AMSA will fully comply with all of its obligations under both state and federal law, particularly dealing with special education students, and that there will be no issue whatsoever. To respond to another point by Justice Cordy as to what would happen if this went off the rails, the issue here under 231A is, was the violation consistently repeated? That's the only time you can invoke that. And at best here, we are talking about something that is not even a violation. They had no right to do anything other than to make their comments and to receive the original application. There's certainly no suggestion of a consistent repetition here. But then we get to Justice Greeney's point, that you don't even have to get to that. You don't have to parse through the statute because there is no standing to begin with. There is no duty owed to the school committee under this statute other than the right to comment, to give them the application and to give them the right to comment. That duty was fulfilled. There is no suggestion that they in any way failed to meet that duty.
Well, I mean, I take it their argument is, okay, that's fine, but we didn't really have the right to comment because we made comments, and then there were, unbeknownst to us, there were changes, significant changes. to us, there were changes, significant changes, and we never had a chance to comment on the final final.
We would, we would suggest, Your Honor, that there were not significant, significant changes at all, that what was submitted in the letter on January 30th was an elaboration. Questions were asked, they needed more completeness, the original application complied, and they were simply elaborating on what the plan would be. The statute gives them no further rights beyond that, and, and they are not alleging that there were any further rights. I think it is instructive, Your Honors, that Ms. Hodge has not dwelt in any way on the other two proposed vehicles here. Clearly, this is not a situation in which either of those vehicles would in any way apply. At best, it's under 231, 231A, but there is no such right under 231A for the reasons I gave, no standing and no repeated violation. Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you.